May fourteenth, two thousand twelve, South Bend Common Council is now in session. Invocation by Reverend Sebastian Williams.
Mr. President, I'm here in behalf of Reverend Chaplain Tony Slago, who had surgery on his back and now is in recovery. I'd like to offer this prayer in my tradition. Lord God of Heaven, Creator of Heaven and Earth, we come before your presence, Lord, this evening to ask your blessing upon this South Bend Common Council. Give each of these your chosen officials with wisdom and understanding and patience. Give them the strength and fortitude to execute their duties as public servants in the interests of the people whom they serve. Grant them your spirit of guidance to decide and implement the correct course of action here tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation, our God, and our family. Reverend Reverend James Gobert. First, John Forty, will you read the rule, please?
(inaudible).
This is Scott.
President.
Mr. Henry Gay.
Henry Gay.
This is Shay.
I have a chair.
Dr. Furlic.
Yes.
Dr. Burner.
President.
Vice President Oliver Diggs.
President.
Officer Number White.
President.
Mr. Furlic.
President.
President.
Certainly, Mr. Forty.
And I, President.
Thank you. May I have a report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
The Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the April twenty-third, May twelve meeting of the Council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved, signed with Eric Dieter, David Burner.
So moved. Second. All right, we have a motion, I guess. We have a second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Thank you. Now, we proceed to square in a citizen member for the Personnel and Finance Committee. Now, introduce Sir Forty. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye, Ms. Elaine James. Ms. Elaine will swear, I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana. And that I will faithfully discharge the duty of a citizen member of the Personnel and Finance Committee. Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Ms. Elaine James is signing her paperwork. I would like to add that she is a recent graduate of Ivy South Bend with a master's degree in social work.
Wonderful.
A little over half.
(inaudible).
Sir Forty, let's go to twelve thirty six, please. The resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana honoring all police officers killed in the line of duty and declaring Friday, May eighteenth, two thousand twelve, as a day of remembrance and dedication to all South Bend police officers and declaring May fourteenth through May eighteenth as Police Officers Memorial Week in South Bend.
Thank you. The Chairperson of Health and Public Safety, Dr. Fred Furlic, will read the resolution. Any officer who would like to stand with Dr. Furlic?
Please, any police officer, please, come up.
William? Captain Zoradi?
Thank you, gentlemen. Whereas last year, one hundred and six police were tragically killed in the line of duty, with these officers including one hundred and fifty-five men and sixteen women whose average age was forty-one years, whose average years of service was twelve years, nine months, which was an increase from one hundred and sixty-two police officers' deaths in two thousand ten, reflecting a dramatic increase of forty percent from two thousand nine. And whereas the South Bend Common Council further recognized that on Friday, May eighteenth, two thousand twelve, at one thirty P.M., the Fraternal Order of Police Lives, number thirty-six, will hold our annual tribute and memorial service at our Police Department Headquarters in honor of all South Bend Police Departments, officers who have given their lives in the line of duty. On behalf of a grateful South Bend community, the Common Council honors these very, very special police officers. Hans Brownett, Fred Buhlen, Oscar Tristensen, Samuel Cooper, Paul DeGash, Charles Parkes, Tom Giroux, Ronald St. German, Louis Keller, Neil McIntyre, Nick Palazzato, Scott Lee Severance, Gilbert Thompson, Roy Thompson, Howard Wagner. The Common Council rededicates itself to assisting the families and friends of each of our fallen officers and trying to help their families rebuild their lives and supporting our police officers serving on the South Bend Police Department today. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section one, on behalf of all citizens of the City of South Bend, Indiana, the Common Council hereby publicly commemorates and gratefully honors each and every one of our fifteen members of the South Bend Police Department who have made the ultimate sacrifice while serving and protecting the residents of South Bend, Indiana. Section two, the South Bend Common Council honors each of our fifteen fallen police heroes who have each had their ten forty-two called out. All of the South Bend Common Council members salute all the fallen law enforcement officers across the country and their family, members, friends, and Police Department colleagues who have been left behind, not because of the way each of them died, but rather because of the way each of them, these dedicated police officers, live and dedicated their lives and careers to their daily police duties and protecting people and property on a twenty-four-seven basis. Section three, the Common Council hereby declares May fourteenth to May nineteenth as Police Officers Memorial Week in South Bend, Indiana, to coincide with National Police Week, which has been annually celebrated since nineteen sixty-two, when President John F. Kennedy designated that May fifteenth, and the week in which it fell as Police Memorial Week. The Common Council urges all citizens to remember and thank those who have given their lives while serving as part of that thin blue line standing between the lawful and the lawless. The Common Council further encourages everyone to honor our fallen heroes and their families and friends, and thanks our current police officers for their many services by attending the Police Officers Memorial Service on Friday, May eighteenth, two thousand twelve, at one thirty P.M. at the South Bend Police Headquarters. Section four, this resolution shall be enforced in effect from and after its adoption by the Common Council and approval by the mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone like to speak in favor of this?
Good evening. My name is Steve Menon. I'm a police officer with the City of South Bend. I work out of the central station at seven oh one West Sample. I'm also the president of the Fraternal Order of Police Lives, number thirty-six, which represents the men and women in South Bend Police Department. I would like to thank the council members, Mayor Pete and his administration, for recognizing the sacrifices that not only these officers have made, but their families as well, and the families continue to make. I'd also like to thank the council and the administration for the continued funding, support, and supporting our efforts to suppress crime in the City of South Bend for citizens who keep them safe.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Or opposition? Councilmembers, any comments? Scott?
I just want to thank all the officers that have served, all those that have fallen for the sacrifice, and you guys out there, and women, and police K-9, helping protect us. I had a good friend, Brian Burkler, from Mishawaka, who was killed, and absolutely true. Remember the days and the dedication that he had given us, and same thing with South Bend. So, thank you all.
Yes, Councilmember Shay.
I would like to thank, I would like to thank you all as well. I understand the sacrifices that you all make on a day-to-day basis, working long hours, working weekends, holidays, nights, putting yourselves on the front line of harm's way. Awesome. And I just want to say, as a resident of South Bend, I'm very grateful for what you all do on a daily basis. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from our council?
You know, that one isn't on the list, that technically it wasn't in the line of duty, but it was preparing for the line of duty. Remember Randy Moore, who died from a broken neck while training, physically training in his art of judo, his own special way of that. So, that's one of the persons that we also like to remember. So, Dr. Furlic, then, I guess you're setting this with a favorable recommendation?
I'm setting this with a favorable recommendation of the council.
Thank you very much.
Move the adopted by acclamation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Captain Zoradi, thank you for coming today.
No, also, as my error, I neglected, or when I told me, in light of Captain Ed Friend, who gave his entire life, his life was the South Bend Police Department, I would just like to take a short moment of silence for everything he did for the community.
We proceed to reports of city offices. This is a section of the council that several members have asked me, and I checked with our council attorney, what this would be now. It would be a time when someone approaches the council from a city office, that they will be able to give us an update on things they have going. And we have also added question and answer to that, because there's several council members that had wanted to get some questions and answers during this time, as opposed to just a presentation. So, if this night, Mr. Booney-Dug will give up and talk to the council on probably some of his new hires and what he has going on.
Good evening. Let me begin by saying that I very much welcome the approach of using this Report to City Offices as an opportunity to increase levels of formal communication between the administration and the council, so that everybody is up to speed on our activity. I wanted to bring you up to speed on a number of things. First of all, I know that there was interest in the council in a progress report on any of the impact of council ordinance related to salaries that went through the council earlier this year. I'm pleased to advise that ten of the twelve positions that were affected by this ordinance are now occupied ably. The main position of City Controller is held by Mark Neal. There was a salary increase associated, a salary cap increase associated with that position. Another salary cap increase is associated with the position of City Engineer. Hopefully, you all have had a chance to get acquainted with our new City Engineer, Mike Meeke. If not, please let me know, and we'll make sure that that's possible. He is coming up to speed and already providing excellent service in the Department of Public Works. The position of City Attorney was converted by the council. On an hourly basis, there was not a salary increase, but because it was converted from full-time, uh, part-time to full-time, the salary overall did increase as far as the maximum. That position is now held ad interim by Aladeen DeRose Sniffer. We continue to work on identifying and extending an offer to someone for holding that job permanently. It's one of the two of the twelve that was addressed that is not currently filled. The same goes for the next position, the Director of Public Works. If you recall, this is the one position that I requested the council authorize a salary higher than that authorized for mayor, because I believe it's that important. We have, as I said, a new City Engineer up and running. We've also benefited tremendously from the volunteering consulting assistance of former Public Works Director Gary Jalot, and he's helping us in that regard as we move, I hope, forward extending an offer to a permanent candidate for that position in the near future. The position of Executive Director of Community and Economic Development, I'm very pleased to announce, has been filled by Scott Ford. Scott comes to us with extensive background in policy development and planning, as well as architecture. He has worked all over the country and the world, and that includes seven years spent in South Bend, and had the opportunity to work with a former member here of this body, Carl King, on internship while he was reviewing the city of South Bend and its planning as an objective academic study. This Ford has also worked in areas ranging from various boat coasts of the United States to Post-Katrina, New Orleans, and brings a very unique perspective. I'm very excited. I know I brought him around informally to meet the most of the council members. We didn't find all of you, so I'm looking forward to a chance later on to be sure that he gets to know you. He, I know, is looking forward to working with the council, and I think you're going to enjoy working with him as much as I do. The position of Director of Human Resources experienced a, another increase in order to create flexibility in the salary for that position. The same move was made on the Director of Information Technology. Both of those are occupied by Janice Hall and Bob Allen, respectively. The positions of Assistant to the Mayor were converted to Chief of Staff to the Mayor, which is occupied by Mike Schmull, with no increase in salary from the Assistant Mayor position. And the Deputy Chief of Staff to the Mayor position was created by the council out of the other Assistant Mayor position, again, with no increase in salary, as occupied by Catherine Ruth. Matt Secora has joined the team in a position that was created by the council, converting the Director of Secretarial Services into the Executive Assistant and Director of Special Projects for the Mayor's Office. He's working very ably in that role without a change in salary. The title was Director of Communications and Special Projects was changed by the council to Communications Director. Small change, again, one that did not include a conversion in salary. That post is held by Deborah Johnson. Deborah worked previously as a journalist and brings those skills to her work as Communications Director in the Mayor's Office. Last but not least, we asked the council to create the position of Deputy City Controller. John Murphy has stepped up very ably into that position. That did include a salary increase from the Finance Director position that it was associated with previously, and I believe that the council will experience, if it has not already, many of the benefits of that step-up opportunity for Mr. Murphy as we move into budget season. Speaking of things the council did that have yielded great results, I just want to note that among many recent council actions that are very much appreciated throughout the city, the re-actualization of funds for the illegal dumping crew, partnership between code enforcement and solid waste, recently picked up its three millions pound of trash. We know that picking up things after they have been dumped is not the entire solution. We need to work on the front end, too, to try to head off dumping. But certainly, a number of constituents have contacted me and hopefully contacted you to express their appreciation for the impact of this program. I wanted to also let you know that the review of the Community and Economic Development Department is now mostly complete. We've worked very hard with individuals, interviewing individually each person in the department, as well engaging a number of experts, to try to make sure that we had the best possible structure and strategy, as well as leadership, for the department going forward. And I will be coming to the council later on this spring, summer, requesting the council's assistance in what I aim to have as a budget-neutral adjustment to the structure of that organization. The intention is to then roll that out at an economic summit to be held in late June, which will be an opportunity for us to communicate to economic actors and civic leaders in this community, who to call for what, and how we are approaching, not just to the city, but hopefully in partnership with county, regional, and state organizations, the question of economic development, making sure we're geared up to attract the jobs of the future. With that, I believe Q and A was an important part of the intention for this Report to City Offices, and happy to answer any questions that you have. And if I don't have an answer ready, I will do my best to follow up and get one to you.
All right. Mr. Scott? Mayor, how many salaries with the new cap have you reached or maximized that cap?
I believe the answer is none. We tried to change the approach that we used to have. We were called off, and it used to be considered a matter of course, that whatever maximum the council established, we would hire in at that maximum. But any of the salaries that were raised, I believe on every one of them, we have left some headroom. Hopefully, so as incumbents in those positions continue to demonstrate excellence.
Thank you. Ms. Shay?
Mayor, in reviewing the department reports that your department has prepared for us, which was very helpful, one report that I found very interesting, and I would love to hear your thoughts, was from the Community and Economic Development Department. As you know, all of us here on the council, as well as yourself, ran on economic growth and development and the need for the city to really move forward in that area. And I guess this is more of a statement, but I'd love to hear your thoughts. As a new council member, I found it very encouraging that in the short time that I've served on the council, we have already, including tonight's meeting, had eight abatements come before the council for substantial investments and job growth. And when I reviewed the reports from the Community and Economic Development Department for last year, I think we're already ahead of what were filed for the entire year. I think there were four or five statements filed in two thousand and eleven. So, as a new council member, as somebody, I'm hoping to encourage my constituents when they ask me, you know, what are we doing in terms of economic growth and development? I've stated to people that have asked me about that, I've stated, well, you know, we're already seeing promising signs of growth. We've had over fifty million dollars worth of investments come before the council for tax abatement. I'd love to hear your thoughts and find out if you're equally encouraged.
Yes, council member, that's a great point. We noticed the same trend. It's very encouraging to see that just year-to-date, this year, the level of investment in dollars, I believe it's north of thirty million dollars, associated with the tax abatement program already exceeds, or is on pace to exceed, what we got in the whole year last year. It's certainly an indication, in my view, that there's something of a wind in the sails of the local economy, and something that I think it's great for council members to point to if anybody's asking for encouragement. Of course, this is only halfway into the year. It's early, and we can't say that we're out of the woods by any means when it comes to the local or regional economy, but I certainly take that as very positive news, and we'll be tracking that numbers and the expectation of continued local growth, especially on the commercial industrial side.
Councilmember White?
Mayor, could you share with the council, you had made notes that in your state of sitting here, that you have been meeting with the school corporation, and maybe you can share with us a little bit about those discussions and any direction that you see the city and the school administration moving towards?
Yes, I continue to try to keep open lines of communication with the school corporation and do that, among other things, by making sure that I have regular, positive meetings with Dr. Schmidt. Recently, we came together, not only in a meeting of the two of us, but one that also involved a number of local employers. And the goal there was really to pull together a number of local businesses that say that they're struggling to fill open positions, even as we note that there is a great deal of local unemployment. So, we pulled together Dr. Schmidt, along with Dr. Coley of Ivy Tech, and Greg Bulmer of Work One, to try to figure out where any of those gaps are, and hopefully we'll come out of that with some direction as those conversations continue. The meetings have not resulted in any formal initiatives that I would bring to council at this time. They are clearly under a level of budget pressure, much as we are, and so there are questions about resources that they're facing and wrestling with in the school corporation. I do think, over time, one area of clear collaboration that's going to emerge is making sure that we're able to address challenges among the youth of the area. It seems to me an obvious area for collaboration between the administration and the school corporation, and I think that can't happen without leadership also from the council. And I may ask the council in the future to work with me to visit areas where we might want to consider probably committing resources to that effort, but nothing formal or articulated at this time.
With all of the recent threats and challenges that we face in our community, what can you do to assure the people of South Bend that the city of South Bend is still safe?
Well, for one thing, I think we can demonstrate how much of the community cares about the safety of our city. The number of people who have spoken up, organized, pulled together in their way, in various different ways, to come together shows at least that we have no problem when it comes to awareness, or passion, or commitment around the question of safety. I am not satisfied with the level of violence that we have observed so far. We've not yet got to summer, and we'll have to see whether the spike in violence that was observed in the spring is going to be a pattern that carries through the year or not. But of course, we can't be content to wait and see what happens. And so, we're ensuring, among other things, that we double down on the city's commitment to community policing. One thing that happened just today was as part of the Weed and Seed Program, it's that's the time at the Muswell Primary Center, where there's a really inspiring partnership between police officers and kids. Just trying to make sure that the kids, often the neighborhoods most affected by this issue, are aware that they can regard police officers as their friends, that officers are there to help them, to try to build that level of trust. I will also be participating in the walk with a cop. The idea here is to make sure the police officers are spending time outside of the car and actually engaging in the neighborhoods and areas that they are sworn to keep safe. And in order to signal my own support for this program, it's something that I'll get out and do myself with an officer, and it might be something that council members would find an interesting way to participate to. Of course, it's not only law enforcement. It's a whole community effort, all hands on deck, but those are some of the areas where we're most concentrated in order to make sure people feel safe.
Thank you for that, because sometimes when you hear everything, you know, you don't want to, no, any crime is too much crime, okay? But the concern I know of some has been that with the nature of what's been going on, that we can easily move into a police state in terms of a city with different people being targeted and challenges, and the trust of everything going on right now is still impossible to avoid. And so, what assurances that you have while we are attempting to address our violence and the challenges, that this will not turn into a police state and people are unduly pulled over and everything else? Because I know there's a push for getting more stick it in. However, how is that going to be done in an appropriate way for all groups of being treated fairly?
Again, as you correctly observe, we cannot police our way out of this problem. It's really a community-wide issue to make sure that we are safe. Of course, we are working very hard to make sure that trust between the police departments and citizens is reinforced. I do believe that the effort to increase traffic enforcement will bear fruit when it comes both to traffic safety and a broader sense of police presence. If there are any indications that there are any even appearances that this policy is being applied unfairly, I would like to know about it right away.
Thank you.
Officer Number White? Thank you, sir. Mayor Booney-Dug, I appreciate you coming before us. Really quick, before I get to the question of what I want to say, I heard you say something about working with Dr. Schmidt over at the South Bend School Corporation. There, I followed a trail through Michigan and then in the back of with Dr. Schmidt here in South Bend. There was a program, Michigan Job Works Program, that was probably worked really well here. I was working on it, and I spent a day in it, and I don't, you know, I won't have myself to work on anything. But what I'm going to implore you to do, it isn't with your soul, that that program developed, she worked on that program- you looked at, she worked on that program in the harbor area, and allow a lot of the students that were in high school to go to summer school and obviously receive some residual income for attending high school and doing other things outside of a high school, a summer school day, so that it was some community projects or some community service thing, or just a job of working in some mailroom. So as you are working and continuing the conversation with Dr. Schmidt, maybe you can get a little further in the conversation, work through on that. I couldn't get anywhere, but maybe that's something that keep happening, can facilitate and see if it can actually happen here in South Bend. It's not a silver bullet, it's a little dark, dark. On another note, I'm a bit perplexed and a bit unhappy, and I think I expressed my discontent by walking out of the meeting earlier. I'm looking at a document, and I have another document as well, and I'm going to first off by saying that we're of order. I think I said that probably about seventeen times earlier today, order. As a council member, there's a level of respect that I think all of my colleagues expect to have and receive when approached by a member of the community or even for this matter, a department head. And when we have the opportunity to have a fluid dialogue between a department head and a council member, myself being a council member, I don't expect the department head to question me, you know, on what I'm doing to police the community. I'm not the police chief. That's the police chief's job. Now, I could participate in the conversation, give you an idea, or perhaps situation, or even perhaps even like advocating for more dollars if there's a program that needs more funding, but my job is not to police the community. I do my fair share of mentoring, knocking on doors, community service projects, the whole nine, but that's not what we're talking about back there. We're talking about the job of a police chief. And I expect and I will even respect if the police chief was in a position to answer those questions without getting agitated or even defensive about what his job title requires him to do. He gets paid for the job. This is what I get paid to be a councilperson. So when I ask a question about the functions of a police department, I expect that the person who is being paid to do that job could be able to answer that question. If they can't, maybe we can talk about it later on. And I don't think that's a far-fetched idea. I don't think that's asking for too much. I think that's probably what's required as a city employee in that position. And so I went a little further with it, and since that discussion was open because of the breach of violence, and a lot of that has happened in District Two, and as a result, I thought about how a police officer's job is a very dangerous job, very dangerous job. Anytime a police officer is caught, it's probably because something bad is happening. It's not because they want to give them roses or things. But what I'm going to get at, and since we've talked about this in this situation, I went into some research mode to figure out how many officers that we have, and we have two-hundred-and-fifty officers. Out of the two sixty, we have two-hundred-and-thirty-nine are male and twenty-one female. Out of that, break down far as the racial, break down, one is an American Indian, another one is an Asian American. Twenty-eight are African Americans, twelve are Hispanic, two-hundred-and-sixteen are Caucasian. Now, we can go down to the ranks. Fourteen total, captain above ranks are fourteen. One you have in positions of authority is an African American, who happens to be the person who was just promoted. So far as the decision making calls, we just ended up with one as an African American, because we talked about African American boys and, you know, young adults, and so we're going to stay on African Americans for right now. Lieutenant is nineteen, we have six African Americans. Sergeant, we have eight African Americans. Corporals, we have zero. And non-ranking, we have twenty-eight African Americans. Something wrong.
What's that?
That's type of, there you go, I think, that's type of. So anyhow, anyway, what I'm getting at is that we're going to work at this thing together in the community, allow us to do what is within our scope. You know, all the other things that we're talking about are extra added on one thing and probably are as a result of what was going on here, but we maximize what we are supposed to be here at this level, and maybe we don't have these conversations later on with a digger fellow or another community advocate who wants to see better in their community. So what I've asked, you know, is that we participate at that level before we get way out there into the middle of the ocean and forget that there's some foundational issues that need to be taken care of. And one of the foundational issues is racial sensitivity, and why don't we have more of a balance, whether they're Latino or African American or some ethnic background in higher ranking positions within the officer rank? And then also, why don't we have better officers that are working the late midnight shift versus during the day shift? Most of the problems that occur in the city of South Bend happens during midnight. Working jobs potentially don't necessarily know how to just use a situation like a thirty-year veteran would have, who know how to. I could be assuming the wrong thing, but I'm guessing that experience does matter when you're dealing with police officers in the community. So, you know, I just have a, you know, a really, really difficult time. I also received another document as well that I have here, and it deals with the officer that we were talking about, and I wanted to discuss this with you after your appointment, because I think there's some sensitivity issues that need to be looked at. I think it's quite insensitive, and it's a minority police officers association in South Bend that are plaintiffs versus the city of South Bend that took place in the early eighties, which includes some of the officers that are in higher ranking positions now that I think that we need to really talk about when they're calling our sensitivity. I'm working with the African American males, because it just says minority police officers association, so I'm assuming that minority probably would say that either they're female, African American, or Latino, but I'm probably going to guess that they're African American males. So I think that there is some things that we really need to look at that are foundational before we begin. Just a plethora of ideas and creative uses that are going to rectify a longstanding issue in the community. It didn't get here overnight, it's not going to be corrected overnight, but we need to get back to the foundation of the issue, and those are my comments.
Right. Do you want to respond to that, or?
Sure, just a couple of thoughts in response to that. One, I appreciate the thought you offered earlier about order and the way that we can best interact in order to approach the council. I think that when the efforts in the community, when and if the efforts in the community around youth violence lead to a call for formal action by government, especially if it involves a commitment of any resources, that's something that needs, as you suggested earlier, to come, by an initiative offered by the administration brought to the council, for the council to decide whether to act. And I think there may be a lot of value in us exploring that approach. Also, I want to just make clear that certainly our administration's goal for any city department, and especially for the police department, is to move toward a reality in which it reflects the richness and the diversity of South Bend. It's an important part of how we can build trust between police officers and relationship between police officers and the community they serve. We have been working, and the police department has been working for some time, largely to move toward this goal through intensified recruiting efforts to try to make sure that more people are attracted to apply to the department who represent underrepresented minorities. I would certainly welcome any suggestions from the council, should any members have any other thoughts on how best to move us closer to that goal. I think it's a goal that we absolutely all share. I think that our community in many ways is being tested by this challenge of youth violence, and it's going to test our ability to come together and hammer out an approach that may or may not involve governments or other citizens groups in varying degrees. And there are a lot of lines along which we're used to dividing that may come between us in achieving this goal, but I have great confidence in South Bend and I have great confidence in South Bend's leaders, including the elected leaders of this council, to make sure that we do in fact make tangible progress toward a safer, happier, healthier city.
Well, you know, I'm sorry, President Davis. You know, again, it's insensitive. Young like males being murdered, essentially, is not a test, it's an indictment. It's not a test. They don't get their lives back. Their families are not growing because of it. The community suffers from it, so it's not a test. It's not a test. It's a mandate, and it's an indictment against what we probably haven't done. Not a test.
Right, thank you. I think you have to go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things that I would like for us to just come back on. We voted in our budgets last year to have money for the bridge that is by the crack center, and a lot of people are saying, okay, the crack center is up and going, the floor of the bridge has not been done, even the person who presented it, one of those here is here, and we need to have that done, or at least an update of when that's going to be done as soon as possible. As earlier I stated, we will be having on our next meeting, but I'd at least like to again share with you, when I was at the Ram Bellis Association meeting, they were concerned about the fire station that's being built on the Port of Curry Avenue, and I was told that everybody's been excited over there about a new fire station we're planning to get, and then they were said that we are not going to get a new fire station, they're just going to pick the other one and move on with life, and that was against what everybody had planned for us. So if you could give us some headway with that, and also with the Union Avenue project over there, the infrastructure, it's very dangerous when you look at coming off this subway, the gas station right over there, and it's about five different, when you come out of there, it's by a church, the Church of United Heights Church around Ram Bellis. It's right in there, the subdivision, you come out of that little section there, it's very dangerous. And people in the past administrations will come out to remember that I've said, "We're going to get work on this, we're going to work on this." Some of the people who were at those meetings now are deceased, the other ones are there sitting there thinking they're going to be deceased, and I'm sure anything's done. And so they gave me an earful last week, and so, which, and like yourself, it's a lot of it right down to myself, and we all go, I hope I'm not the senior citizen sitting in the room, first in that the next generation, we're wondering what's going to happen with that fire station, what's going to happen with the Union Avenue, and again, we have this bridge that is now becoming the bridge to nowhere, and we need to get it done.
I appreciate that, Councilman. I will investigate those three issues and provide an update for next available opportunity.
I appreciate that.
Okay, I've got a lot of questions and comments, but we're not going to go into that because we don't have time. Just real quickly, in regards to the Miso and Weed and Seed thing, who was there today and what was talked about?
There was a pizza party for third and fourth graders. They had created coloring books to kind of cap off their program. A number of members of the police department were there, led by Lieutenant Dick Powers, who's been doing terrific work in community policing, as well as a number of other officers who've been participating. Dr. Schmidt was also on hand, and it was a great opportunity to just recognize some of the partnerships that have emerged in our community.
Well, we'll talk about that, and I'm going to meet with you and other administrative staff on some of the things that Councilmember Davis talked about, one in regards to the rank structure there at the police department, and then certain things like we talked about at the town hall meeting and the Weed and Seed stuff. So I appreciate your time and all those questions and any other things that you need to follow up with us, or us looking will be sure we get a hold of you, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, the mayor just talked about the issue regarding the reauthorization of money for the abandoned homes, I mean, not all of the abandoned homes, any of the...
vacant and abandoned homes.
Trash pickup.
Trash pickup, thank you.
Legal dumping.
Legal dumping, thank you. When is that, that coming to near to the end, and then June? Will that be coming back before us again, or to continue?
I would assume it would be back in the budget.
Pardon me?
I would assume it would be back in the budget.
Okay. So that's to continue that, so that's not going to stop in June, is it?
I would hope that they've set up this program, and in the course of two years, to the point that we have such a program, and based on feedback from citizens as well as from administration, I would trust that we see this particular initiative being part of the budget.
Okay.
But this is funded for one year.
Yeah, I see.
Hey, I have a motion to zone it for me, the whole packet. Okay.
This is the portion of the council meeting where bills are given a second reading in a public hearing. I wish to share with you that each of the bill and resolution that you will hear tonight has been given a first reading as part of a public hearing, except for a committee meeting and public hearing required for this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bills were discussed and the results of their discussion. If you'd like to have copies of the process of the procedures pertaining to the committee as a whole, they are available. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Bill thirteen dash twelve. Councilmember Gavin?
Yeah, I understand. Oh, I'm sorry. The co-sponsors request that this will be continued indefinitely?
Okay, second? Second. Has been moved from second that Bill thirteen dash twelve will be continued indefinitely. May I hear your vote to the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Boardy, will you please give a second reading for Bill fourteen dash twelve?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter two, article three, section two dash twelve point three of the South Bend Municipal Code, addressing procedure for addressing citizen appointments.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is. Earlier today, about four oh seven, I believe, the council ruled committee met, and we discussed both the South Bend proposal, and now we're coming into the small council. Right now, it's a fair amount of...
Thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, I am.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Oliver Davis. I live at eighteen oh one Nash Street, and I'm here in South Bend, and I'd like to bring this note before you. This bill is regarding two key issues here, communication and transparency of our appointing bodies. This council appoints different people to represent us on various committees throughout the city and to deal with different topics, and what this is going to do is help create a more open process with us in terms of having quarterly meetings, or at least give quarterly reports from our appointing bodies, helps them to deal with transparency and being able to communicate with us more. We are going to be giving to you all later on a sheet on guidelines for our appointing bodies to have a better understanding of our issues, so they can communicate our needs and our desires to the various boards that they represent, so that their wishes are reflected upon being our wishes, and we can work together to make sure that we are on the same page as we address the different issues around the city and not be in a reactive mode, but also in a proactive mode in addressing these kind of needs for our issues.
Thank you. Councilmember, do you have any questions of the petitioner?
No, but I'd like...
Councilmember Davis?
I'm sorry, I didn't say anything. Sorry. Councilmember Davis, I appreciate your foresight, and I thank you for a lot of partnering with you on this particular matter, this bill. I think that it calls for a level of transparency that we haven't had with our appointed individuals on several different boards, and I hope that this will prove to us later on, I'll be looking for, as far as communication and transparency, for all the different boards that the appointee started on.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from council members? Seeing we're now entering the public portion of our meeting, is there anyone present wishing to speak on behalf of Bill fourteen dash twelve? Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of this bill? Seeing no one, if there is anyone wishing to speak on behalf, I mean, to speak in opposition of Bill fourteen dash twelve? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing is now closed. Councilmember, what is your pleasure?
Favorable recommendation.
Has been moved from second. All those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Bill fourteen dash twelve consented to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Boardy, will you please give a second reading to Bill fifteen dash twelve?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter two, article eight, by the inclusion of South Bend municipal code, by the inclusion of new section two dash one twenty-three point two, addressing regulations and reporting mechanisms on city usage of alternative fuels, compressed natural gas, CNG, and liquefied natural gas, LNG, and related energy efficiency.
Thank you, Mr. Boardy. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Madam Chair, the public works and property dedication committee, a public hearing on Bill fifteen twelve this afternoon comes to council with a favorable recommendation.
I do know that we have a petitioner and a sponsor of this particular bill. I do ask that both of you give your name and address for the record, and to give us a brief summary of your support.
Certainly. And thank you, Councilmember White, uh, Henry Davis, uh, Junior, uh, fifty-one seventeen out of Wood Drive, South Bend, Indiana.
Oliver Davis, Junior, um, eighteen oh one Nash Street. Yes, um, the bill, bill that we have before us is fifteen twelve, and what we did, and what I've asked is that, uh, we begin our policies for the clean, uh, energy policies that reduce our, uh, carbon footprint. Uh, we've done a resolution in the past, uh, a couple of months ago, maybe, when we, uh, actually began the process of talking about how can we reduce our carbon foot- footprint, but also reduce the cost of government and government services. And so, uh, moved a step further into this, and we're now, before you have a ordinance or a bill that hopefully become ordinance at the end of today, showing some measuring tools and some things that we can do to adopt the policies that are necessary to move into using natural gases for our vehicles. Uh, during the committee hearing, um, you realized that there was a, a spreadsheet that was painted, and I hope you still have it, and it showed using up to sixteen vehicles, uh, heavy vehicles, that will obviously be, uh, being used as a model in order to show where we can cut costs at. Uh, Gavin, you were right of the cumulative, it wasn't necessarily yearly, but when we found out throughout the, uh, next several years, with the sixteen vehicles that are listed on this particular piece of paperwork, you will find that we're cutting our costs by, uh, three hundred thousand plus. And so, given the fact that we have the opportunity to use more poli-, um, more vehicles such as police cars, or, uh, I think they don't do fire trucks because they're too large, but other, uh, uh, vehicles that we use, because we have eleven hundred vehicles in our fleet total, uh, we will be able to start cutting the cost of government services and lock in a rate that obviously will be more beneficial to the longevity of our budget process. Uh, again, our carbon footprint, we talked about earlier as well, that we have one of the worst air qualities in the United States of America. And so, hopefully, by using some of these policies and adopting this policy, we will be able to live a cleaner, healthier society, and our pockets will be a little bit larger as well. So, I definitely implore you, uh, to obviously vote for this piece of legislation so we can begin the process of, uh, uh, using, uh, natural gas, compressed natural gas, uh, here in South Bend, Indiana.
Key point that I would like to, key point I would like to add in, is the semi-annual reporting that you have had in your nets here. Um, this will help us to be able to partner with other entities such as the South Bend Community School Corporation, St. John's, City of Mishawaka, Transpo, and other entities that have vehicles that have fleets aimed at reducing energy demand in summary, also looking at summary of all alternative fuels, grants purchased and pursued in this area, and the summary of other works with the U.S. Department of Energy Clean Cities Organization, such as Greater Indiana Clean Cities Coalition, and South Shore Clean Cities. All of these are in the efforts to work with these different entities, so we can all work together to be able to deal with, um, options as it relates to saving costs and monies in the future, all of this not be cooked in one year, but it's over time, and we'll look at how that can be done with all of us working together, collaborative efforts.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions, or the petitioners? Again, thank you so much. We'll now move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone saying, is there anyone present wishing to speak in favor of Bill fifteen dash twelve? We still may ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Sandra Brown, I live at two-two-two Eastern Bar Street, South Bend, Indiana. Um, I agree with you that the way gas is, to look for alternative fuel. Thirty-two and a half years, I worked for a company called Witsco. Fortunately, I didn't blow myself up. I relished a police officer right at his home north of town, he was not as fortunate as I was. This is a volatile fuel. The training it takes for your employees. The regulators and stuff were defuelling this vehicle, calling this store up, and I stand to send you a tape on what happened to us down in the port. We had a young man that was fueling up this vehicle, uh, a regulator malfunctioned on his truck, luckily he was laid, he was out there, we all goofing off, he wasn't where he's supposed to be, to save his life. But when the case left, uh, Missville facility, it landed at a bowling alley about four or five miles away, and through the roof, and almost took out a guy that was cleaning a bowling alley. So if you go to this natural fuel, there's nothing wrong with it, I'm, I'm all for it. But your training for your employees is gonna be essential, because it's dangerous, and don't take it lightly. I hope that you would do a lot of research on it, because a few is a max, but your training portion of this is very serious. So please, contact the experts, and make sure all your employees go through the training.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there anyone else present wishing to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing portion is not closed.
Can I just one thing, Mr. President? Uh, Mr. DeGelock said something that I'd like to highlight, as we look at utilizing these alternative fuels in the future, as we do our construction and other places where these vehicles would be stored and housed, um, that when we, um, will also have to consider adapting our buildings and adapting our facilities to meet the demands of what the new, um, fuels, um, safety requirements will be. I know that we had to do the same thing when we looked at designing Transpo, with all of the latest issues and everything else, as we talked about building our garage, and we wanted to look in the future, so every ten years you have to build a new garage, so you can't afford that. So looking down the road, as we look at keeping our city green, and looking at all those issues that we will have to look at that in our public works areas of life down the road, as we look at our budgets in the future. So I think that will address issues that Mr. Brown has raised in that instant place.
Thank you. Councilmember, do you...
Yes, I'd like to declare a proposal from our council attorney, I believe, when we talked about the committee meetings, this is just a recording entity of resolutions for, uh, approving this type of fuel, or not advocating this spec- this type of fuel.
The ordinance creates seven specific areas that, uh, be a strategic update, with the key people being the director of public works, the energy director, as well as, uh, uh, Mr. Shabaski. But again, uh, as far as the next step that, uh, both Councilmember Davis has, have addressed, that would be part of a bunch of charactances where there would be much more discussion than...
This is a clarification for the audience, we are not voting tonight on a, a field of alternatives.
But one thing I want, I'm, may I, one thing I want to emphasize, is make sure that we're going for a cultural change, and hopefully that is the end result of what we're proposing tonight. I think that, you know, yes, we need to probably use more natural gas, however, it may be a little bit dangerous, but, but isn't, you know, uh, so, uh, I'm not diminishing what Mr. Brown said, I'm not diminishing what you're saying, however, there is, it needs to be a, a complete change of culture in how we do business here, and therefore we're working and working towards. Administration obviously has the ability to say yes or no to this piece of legislation, just like anything else that is in our book. But what I'm going for, what we are, should be going for, is making sure that our budget, uh, reflects good practices, and this will obviously reflect the good practice of the council, making sure and to ensure better budgeting practices as relates to alternative fuel.
Any other questions, comments? We now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill fifteen dash twelve.
Make motion, we, uh, move this favorably to full council, second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor that Bill fifteen dash twelve will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation, I hear you vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Boardy, will you please give a second reading to, uh, Bill fifteen dash twelve?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the lease with the city of South Bend Building Corporation dated as of April first, two thousand and three, as amended, previously entered into for the construction and equipping of a new central fire station and renovating and expanding the police station, and regarding certain related matters.
Is there a committee report? Councilwoman?
Uh, the committee did meet, and, uh, I'd like to, uh, uh, address Mark Neal. Well, we sent a table response, and Mark Neal was...
Thank you. At this time, we do have a petitioner, city controller, Mr. Mark Neal.
Thank you, Councilmember White, Mark Neal, city controller. Um, the, the ordinance you, proposed ordinance you have in front of you is that in two thousand and three, the council had approved an alter addition to sale and sale by the city of South Bend Building Corporation, uh, first mortgage revenue bond to finance the cost of the construction and equipping of a new central fire station and the renovation expansion of the police station. And from that, the city then previously entered a lease agreement between the building corporation and the city. Uh, as I noted earlier today, the opportunity presented here is, you know, refunding, think of it as a refinancing, um, our financial advisors have identified an opportunity for us to refund these bonds in order for us to save on interest costs for the remaining life of the bonds. The, uh, the building corporation issued those bonds in two thousand and three for twenty-one point, uh, three-three-five million dollars. The current balance outstanding is at fourteen million, five hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, we would ask that the, the council allow the building corporation to refund or refinance those prior bonds, and permit the city and the building corporation to reduce the lease rentals payable by the city under the terms of lease with the building corporation. Uh, the, uh, ordinance goes on to, to request your approval for us to take any and all action necessary to affect that, uh, this refunding, and we would only do so if it is in the financial interests of the city, and in saving at least four hundred and fifty thousand dollars net of the, uh, of, net of the refunding.
Thank you so much. Frank, you asked me if there's any questions that councilmembers might have. I, uh, councilmember, uh, Derek Beeter would like to, uh, share and make a statement of his conclusion at this time.
On the advice of the account, my council attorney, our council attorney, as a matter of fact, uh, I'd like to declare that I have been in the council since nineteen seventy-five. And if this resolution happens, I will see, receive no financial...
It's gonna be...
And, uh, I don't think there's any expansion for an office of my shop, so I don't think you have to vote on this one.
Thank you, President Beeter. Are there any questions, uh, councilmember, show?
Um, thank you, Mark, for joining us tonight. I just wanted to clarify, um, and thank you for looking at creative ways to save the city and the taxpayers' money, so, um, that's fantastic. I just wanted clarification, I was trying to take notes while we were discussing this earlier today.
Yes.
And, um, I have thought the, the savings over time by refinancing these bonds would be closer to a million dollars?
That's correct. The analysis that we had done in March, and our financial advisor, uh, there's certainly volatility, there's changes in the interest rates, uh, daily in the marketplace, but they continue to believe that the original analysis that they've done, uh, is still, uh, we think, uh, at least seven hundred and fifty thousand to eight hundred thousand dollars. It could be as much as a million, um, but right now, we would say the market would indicate probably seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars of net savings once all the costs were...
Expensive for pay.
...spent or paid.
And, um, and bear with me, uh, that's over the life, lifespan...
That's correct, remaining, remaining ten years of the bond.
Ten years, okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Neal. At this time, we move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in favor of Bill fifteen dash twelve? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing is not closed. I entertain a motion.
Favorable recommendation.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor of that Bill fifteen dash twelve will be sent to the full council with favorable recommendation, I hear you vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. I would not entertain a motion, if I may...
Move second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
First John Boardy. For a third, fourteen twelve.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter two, article three, section two dash twelve point three of the South Bend municipal code, addressing procedure for addressing citizen appointment.
Move it back to the fourteen twelve.
Second. It's Boardy.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shay.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
President Beeter. Nine, aye.
Fifteen twelve.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter two, article eight, by the inclusion of South Bend municipal code, by the inclusion of new section two dash one twenty-three point two, addressing regulations and reporting mechanisms on city usage of alternative fuels, compressed natural gas, and liquefied natural gas, and related energy efficiency.
Move it back to the fifteen twelve.
Second. It's Boardy.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shay.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White. Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
President Beeter. Nine, aye.
Thank you, fifteen twelve.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing the execution of an amendment, the lease with the city of South Bend Building Corporation dated as of April first, two thousand and three, as amended, previously entered into for the construction and equipping of a new central fire station, and renovating and expanding of the police station, and regarding certain related matters.
Move for passage of Bill fifteen dash twelve.
Second.
It's Boardy.
Mrs. Shay.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
President Beeter.
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Resolutions, they have a motion to continue, twelve thirty-seven.
Come on.
The May twenty-ninth, on...
Second.
Okay, for that?
Aye.
Any opposition, thank you. Twelve thirty-eight.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as eighteen oh one Commerce Drive, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for R2 Diagnostics, Inc.
Thank you, committee report.
Senior Economic Development.
I'm sorry. Um, senior economic, uh, development, uh, committee met this afternoon, and we brought twelve thirty-eight to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Jeff? Come on up. Would you name an address and a, uh, short synopsis of the project?
Good evening. My name is Jeff McGowan, I am a CPA with Kugelwarten, CPAs, uh, two-ten South Michigan and South Bend, Indiana. I'm here with, uh, Mike Morris, who is the owner of R Squared Diagnostics, as well as, uh, other companies, uh, known as, uh, Enzyme Research. Uh, R Squared is proposing to purchase equipment in the amount of roughly four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and, uh, with that equipment, it will create two new permanent jobs, uh, with an annual salary of, uh, roughly sixty-five thousand dollars, and will also maintain fifteen existing permanent full-time jobs, uh, and one existing part-time jobs, which represents an annual payroll of eight hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, as we spoke in, uh, committee this afternoon, that, um, uh, Mr. Morrison, his, uh, entities of Enzyme and, uh, R Squared, uh... uh, and the real estate, uh, entity, MJ Morrison Property, uh, has been a, a good, uh, corporate citizen for the community and pays in excess of fifty thousand dollars per year in real and personal property taxes. And, uh, instead of trying to, uh, talk about coagulation, I thought I would let Mr. Morrison speak briefly about what the, uh, proposed equipment will do.
Hi, I'm Mike Morris, uh, thirty-four ten Meadow Hill Road here in South Bend is the address. Uh, what we'll be doing with this equipment is it's an expansion, uh, automation of our delivery system or filling, uh, filling stations for filling small vials with diagnostics. So, we're in the, uh, detection of bleeding and clotting disorders. So, what our plan is, is to be able to put in some automated filling lines and allow us to fill millions of vials, uh, a year and, and do work for, expand our current business and, uh, bring in some other business from other companies that have asked us to do some refilling for them.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
No. Uh, thank you for your investment to our community again.
All right. Anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Councilmembers, may I have a recommendation?
I'm going for adoption, twelve thirty-eight.
Second. Mr. Forty.
Doctor Furley.
Aye.
Doctor Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White. Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shay.
Aye.
President Beeter.
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Thank, thank you. It's been a long wait since the old Sears, uh, warehouse parts store there, so appreciate you. All right, good work. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Twelve thirty-nine. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as thirty-six oh five West Cleveland Road, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Federal Mogul Powertrain, Inc.
Committee report.
Community economic development, uh, committee met this afternoon, we send twelve thirty-nine to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, good evening. I'm Trent Rock. I'm the plant manager for Federal Mogul's, uh, South Bend piston operations. And, um, we're located at thirty-six oh five West Cleveland Road. I have some notes here that I, I wanted to share with you to frame up what we do and why I'm here. Uh, our plant is part of Federal Mogul's Powertrain Group, which is a global manufacturer of engine components for the automotive, heavy-duty, and small engine market. Our plant here in South Bend represents a hundred million dollars in revenue of Federal Mogul's, roughly six and a half billion dollars in revenue. We employ four hundred employees, and, uh, for twenty-five years now, we've been one of the premier piston manufacturers in the world. Uh, this investment that we're about to put in is twenty-two million. It will underwrite, uh, our future developments in new business and new technologies. Three and a half million of that is for our new prototyping center, which will establish our plant as the, uh, central manufacturing facility for all prototypes globally for Federal Mogul's piston operations. And right now, our, uh, straight-line employment with, uh, this investment, we will be at least twenty employees. That's the folks that we went hired to run just the new equipment at current market volume. Just those volumes doing, uh, increase as we expect them to do over the course of the next few years. In fact, the more traditional automotive levels in North America, it could, uh, uh, triple or even more than that, uh, quadruple that number in a very short period of time. And, uh, our request is for an abatement to help, uh, establish us as a competitive global manufacturer of pistons for twenty-five more years here in South Bend.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the council? I just got a couple of, uh, what's the average salary of, of your four hundred employees, roughly?
Uh, on the hourly side, it's about eighteen dollars an hour, uh, overall, about, uh, twenty-seven dollars an hour when you include the salary folks.
And then the rough-
The abatement is about twenty million dollars in, uh, in payroll. This will represent about a million increase on that.
And the level of, uh, an incoming employee, would they have, perhaps some type of vocational skill, ways coming in?
That number of twenty includes both salary folks as well as, uh, as hourly. So, we'll be looking primarily for machinists and foundry operators on the operational side, as well as skirt counters and advisors and assemblers, uh, in our operations. We'll also be hiring, uh, engineers and, uh, operational folks to oversee those new, those new operations.
Because that's one of the things that we've been discussing in conjunction with the city of South Bend and vocational places. I know that the House should do a good job of training people and, and anywhere in your business would be a perfect spot for those people to end up, so appreciate that. All right, thank you. Anyone like to speak? Listen.
Um, I just want to say I, uh, thank you for being such a good corporate citizen. I have a good friend that worked at Federal Mogul and she feels it's an excellent company. Um, your company has, um, done very, she's done very well with your company. Um, I thank your company for sticking it out while the, uh, American, uh, auto industry certainly was in a lot of trouble. And it's, um, wonderful to see as, uh, the American auto industry really rebounds, as we see more Fords and, uh, DMs on the road. Um, we know that, uh, your pistons will be in those vehicles. So, um, thank you for all that you do and you're such a good corporate citizen.
You're very welcome. Council has been a great home for us for twenty-five years. Uh, we, we appreciate all the support we give to you folks.
And again, another fabulous company in the first district. Uh, thank you, uh, for your role. Um, I also work for Channel One Automotive supplier, and I know the future is looking pretty good for automotive. But I love the fact that we can say here in Indiana and America that a global leader, uh, in the automotive industry. So, keep up the good work. Appreciate it.
Will do. Thank you.
Kind of like, kind of like you're stepping into Brett Park, isn't it? That's right. Okay, good job. Anyone like to speak in favor, Brett?
Please, dear analogy here, not the Packers.
Anyone in opposition? Councilmember, may I have a recommendation?
I'm going for the adoption of, um, Bill number twelve thirty-nine.
Second.
Forty.
Doctor Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shay.
Aye.
Doctor Furley.
Aye.
President Beeter.
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the good work.
Thank you. We appreciate that work.
Twelve thirty-four, please. Resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving an agreement extending the Saint Joseph County Housing Consortium and authorizing the execution thereof.
Committee report.
Community economic development, uh, committee met this afternoon, and we send twelve thirty-four with a favorable recommendation.
Go ahead.
Uh, this time, I'd like for our council to make a disclaimer. Um, while this doesn't directly tie to the funds of my wife's nonprofit, she does receive homework from CGP funding that is administered through this. Um, I've been told by council I can vote on this. It doesn't directly, uh, pertain to the funding my wife would receive at the near northwest neighborhood.
Your wife is the executive director of the NNA.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? All right, I'm good.
Pam Meyer, uh, community and economic development with offices on twelve floor of this building. Um, the resolution before you will authorize the mayor to sign a document that renews the Sancho County Housing Consortium along with the city of Mishawaka and Sancho County. And this renewal will be for a period of three years. It will allow those three entities to receive, uh, federal home funds, which is primarily for housing of low and moderate income individuals. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the council?
No, I just wanted to say a couple comments again, and I, and I hope that we be able to, uh, move forward this conversation. I don't mean to be a dead horse. Um, but I wanted to make sure that we are in full understanding that there needs to be a level of transparency and also an understanding of what goes on with these housing consortiums and the dollars that we receive from HUD. Uh, in the past, I've never, I've advocated for the same level of discussion. We've never really had a level of discussion. And I hope with the adoption or the soon to be adopted, hopefully it is adopted, uh, uh, MBE, WBE, uh, consultants and, uh, and how we're working at making sure that we're hitting the levels that we're supposed to, meaning local high, uh, minority businesses, uh, that we can become a better city in administering these grants and making sure that those who are within the areas given, uh, are at first at the table or even at the table when the dollars are being, uh, uh, divided up or the dollars are being given up as well. And so, uh, as it being thought of, the level of conversation I wanted to have before this, uh, actually was heard on council floor. Uh, because I didn't, you know, get that conversation, I'm not in favor of this. But I hope that we will be able to thereafter, uh, after this week or when you come back, we can have a level of discussion so that the whole entire community actually knows and we actually know more as council people about what happens, you know, during the grant process and, uh, uh, making sure that the level of procurement and the contracts and the whole line are being hit, uh, at the level that's supposed to. But again, Pam, thank you so much for your time.
Anyone like to speak in favor of this? Possibly opposition? Seeing none, council may have a recommendation.
With the adoption of, uh, twelve thirty-four.
Second. Forty.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Nay.
Councilmember White.
Nay.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Nay.
Mrs. Shay.
Aye.
Doctor Furley.
Aye.
Doctor Varner.
Aye.
President Beeter.
Aye.
That would be six ayes, three nays.
Twelve forty, please. Mr. Forty.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appointing an agent slash negotiator to represent the common council and addressing the advisory city negotiating team for the twenty-twelve Fire Department and Police Department negotiations.
I believe we had a committee report today on this. We discussed the final kinds. What happened?
Mr. Furley. Uh, there was a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember White.
My name is Karen White. I reside at nineteen twelve Melvorn White, city of South Bend. Um, as you are aware, this is a negotiating year with a negotiating teams representing the sworn members of the South Bend Fire Department and the South Bend Police Department. A memo was sent to each of you on May second, which outlines the process and the need to have a positive and productive negotiation. Resolution twelve forty will appoint a council agent and chief negotiator for these negotiations who have a proven track record of successfully working with the city's advisory teams and the union representatives. This resolution will appoint the council agent and chief negotiator. I ask for your support as we move forward and we know that we will have, hopefully, a very successful negotiations with the case department as well as the fire department. If you have any questions, be more than happy to address those.
Thank you. Questions? Anyone like to speak in favor of twelve forty, as we said here right now? And the oppositions? May I have a recommendation from our council?
Moving for adoption, twelve forty.
Second.
Forty. Uh, councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shay.
Aye.
Doctor Furley.
Aye.
Doctor Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
President Beeter.
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Thank you. Twelve forty-one, please.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving the minority slash winning business enterprise utilization board's recommendation for the engagement of diversity compliance officer.
Committee report.
Well, uh, the community economic development committee, as well as the personnel finance committee, met with Dr. Neil and he's going to session, uh, as regards twelve forty-one with Mr. Counsel, full council, uh, with some favorable recommendations.
With some caveats.
With some caveats.
And the caveats, do we need to find them at this point?
Uh, just advisory that the enabling legislation that initially established the MBE, WBE ordinance, uh, would be looked at to address the concerns raised by council members.
The concerns were, uh, legal, A, also-
Structure of the board with regard to-
Secretary?
Secretary, without the resource meeting, I'm just doing it.
And I did have the opportunity to talk to, uh, Mr. Mark Neal, um, after the twenty meetings, and he's very open to that discussion.
So.
Those with the caveats.
Yeah. Anything with the presenters?
Yes, I'm going to ask Mr. Tony Fitz to, uh, join me, as he is the chairperson of the diversity board. Uh, would like to present to you the council, resolution twelve dash forty-one, which takes the next steps in carrying out the position of ordinance ten zero eighty-one, which was passed by the common council on April twelfth, two thousand and eleven. Um, we have created, we, the administration, along with the council, a nine-member minority women's business enterprise utilization board. This board, since November tenth, two thousand and eleven, uh, has met, uh, twelve times. Those meetings have lasted anywhere from two to three hours. Uh, the board has had a number of outreach efforts. One was at the Navatorium. They attended a fair on the campus of Saint Mary's. They have worked through the ordinance. And I'm going to ask Mr. Phelps to, sorry, I don't like this.
Oh, you do.
Anyway, uh, long day, to briefly walk, uh, the council through, uh, the board's, uh, efforts in terms of advertising for, uh, diversity officer and/or firm, but also to share with you the process. And at this time, Tony will walk you through that process.
Thank you, Councilmember White.
My name is Anthony Fitz. Address is twelve oh one East Fairview Avenue in South Bend. I have been a member, I am a member of the diversity and utilization board, for lack of a better word, for the full title, and was appointed president of that board. So, I'm speaking on behalf of, of the other board members tonight. Uh, we have, as, as White pointed out, met twelve times and done other outreach meetings. The purpose of our board through the ordinance is to affect, putting it, well, to put into effect two primary initial tasks. One is the engagement of or hiring of a diversity compliance officer. And the second is to draft a utilization plan that would be then employed by the city. Uh, our task and our efforts have been ongoing since we first got together in our first meetings in November of two thousand and eleven. And in those meetings, we have moved towards the process of drafting an RFP, request for proposal, to solicit, uh, respondents for this task. Uh, working with Mr. Gary Gilat, um, the ex-director of Public Works and now as a citizen volunteer to our board, we have put together, uh, again with his help, the RFP, circulated that, uh, in March with the two advertisements that were required, uh, on April the tenth, actually, on April third, we had an initial, uh, pre-bid conference. Uh, several respondents did, uh, attend that meeting, and we opened all the bids that were received on April tenth. On that date, we, we opened the bid to find there were four respondents to the RFP. Michigan Area Chamber of Commerce was one, Buyers Consulting Group was another. Alex Williams of the Soar Entrepreneur was a third, and Trinal Inc. of Chicago was a fourth. We had, along with the RFP, distributed a scoring matrix, a one-hundred-point scoring matrix that would be used for evaluating the respondents. Uh, and through that, uh, matrix and the scoring that was turned in by all the board members, the top two respondents to the RFP were, uh, selected to be, by the scoring, that came out of this Trinal Inc. out of Chicago and Buyers Consulting Group, who I'm sure the name is familiar to most, in his involvement, lead buyers in his involvement with the crowd center here in town. We had, uh, by a vote of the group had agreed that we would interview the top two respondents, buyers and Trinal Inc. Uh, we had those interviews in early April and again, did the re-scoring, again, using the same point matrix, uh, same one-hundred-point scoring matrix. And the final result of that scoring came out that, uh, uh, Trinal Inc. of Chicago was selected to be our board's recommendation to council for this role. Thank you.
And now we'd like to ask Mr. Mark Neal, some of city controllers, you have been able to work through the ordinance. Uh, the administration has a very critical role in- Uh, the administration has a very critical role in ensuring that, uh, the board as well as the plan is being advanced. And it's been a joy to work with Mr. Neal as well as with members of the board, the diversity board, but also with members of administration as we collectively, uh, have worked through the ordinance to ensure that we have such a board to really address a critical issue within our city. At this time, I'm going to ask Mark to come and give a very brief overview in regards of his perspective, administration's role, and also the need to have such board, such as the diversity board and ultimately the diversity officer.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Councilmember White. Mark Neal, city controller, uh, as noted, uh, Gary Gilat is the citizen volunteer has done a terrific job of supporting the efforts of the board to get us to this point, uh, along with, uh, Jan Hall, director of, of human resources, and Phil Custer, our purchasing manager, who has spent a, a great deal of time as well trying to support the board and their efforts to, uh, get to this point to, uh, uh, have a diversity compliance officer identified, and I should say diversity compliance officer firm identified that we think can best support, uh, the efforts so that we can, uh, begin, uh, quickly, I would hope, after, uh, further, uh, board of works and council action to support, uh, the initiative of, of, of compliance, but more importantly, education and training so that we can begin the process of measuring how well we're doing, but, uh, more focused on how we'll be improving the process of working with minority and women owned businesses as they compete for a city contracting opportunities. Thank you.
Uh, I guess, uh, along with Oliver, you have a question?
Yes. Um, earlier today, um, uh, Mr. Mary Miller talked about the unions and the labor, labor unions not necessarily being a part of the selection process and everything else. Can you address how going forward that could be corrected? And so, because a part of the, uh, legislation there to address the involvement of the labor unions?
Um, the, uh, the selection process was, uh, handled by the board, uh, by the board as it's been constituted, uh, but, uh, we're certainly looking for input from any, uh, citizen or groups' involvement. I spoke to Mr. Miller after the, uh, after the committee session today and certainly want to be sure that we are in fact very proactive in what we can do regarding labor groups in, in the purpose of the enactment of this ordinance and the work with Trinal in their education and training as well as the compliance aspect of it. Is that responsive to your question, Councilmember Davis?
I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I'm good with that. And so, everything is for one year, then after one year, then they will be bringing a report back to their, um, uh, selecting, uh, who they have decided to do the selected program.
The, the, uh, the, uh, ordinance has been written as for a one-year period, which at that time would be reviewed again for renewal or however we might look at extending the program into a second year.
Okay, I'm good.
Mark, the, uh, what initially was in the budget of sixty-seven-five, I believe?
That's correct.
And then that will be for the company out of Chicago?
Uh, it, uh, amount not to exceed that amount. They, they, they may engage others to support them in their efforts, but not, not to exceed the sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
But that, just for clarification, that was originally written in as a person to be in the budget or was that for the program itself?
No, that was an appropriation that gave latitude for either a, a individual or in, on staff or contract.
In the budget, actually, still as an outside consultant, but it could be handled wherever was deemed appropriate.
You were going to continue with the relationship with the, uh, people in Chicago and that would be a yearly and like Oliver said, that would come back to the council if you're going to continue that specific entity?
That's correct.
Or if they hire, if they find someone in, in this area, it would just, I guess it could be a revolving or changing entity as we go.
That's, that's, that's correct. It's set up for one year and the contract for one year, uh, and that we would look in the, for the two thousand and thirteen budget to again look at both funding it and then making the decision again through the first of the utilization board with council approval as to what we should be doing, uh, in two thousand and thirteen.
Thank you. Valerie?
You say one year, um, not one calendar year, not June to June, it's June to Ja-, uh, December thirty-first, correct?
Uh, the funding is through December thirty-first. I, I have, I'm looking at council attorney to see how that final language was drafted. Is it goes to, does the contract go to December thirty-one of two thousand and twelve or is it actually extend beyond the way?
It would go beyond. Again, that actual language would be in the second resolution.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just add, uh, in response to Councilmember Oliver Davis, starting to part of the enabling legislation with regards to the unions and the train, that Mr. Neal's department would do outreach with either training and, and all of that and that is quarterly updates to the council.
And, uh, when they finish, uh, their recommendation, uh, for, for wherever we go with the future for the second year, uh, that person is, is recommended to come back to us and then we make the decision whether or not we want to continue with that individual person or with the, um...
Similar process with council.
I'm at peace.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this, if you'll say? Opposition? Counsel, your call here.
I'm just taking a vote. I would like to personally thank, um, Councilmember, uh, Timothy Ross, who really along with other sponsors of the regional ordinance, moving this very important initiative forward for our community. As we look at minority and women's businesses, uh, I think it's very important that we as a city, that we do all we can to ensure that we have full participation and because of, um, Councilmember Ross', um, passion and desire, uh, I think we're at the point that we're at now, if I was to record, to recognize his work that he's done to get us to this point.
Should we make a motion?
Oh, I would like to make the motion that we, uh, adopt resolution twelve dash forty-one.
I have, yeah. Second? Second? Forty? Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Uh...
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
President Dieter, may I, uh, really quick, I wanted, before we took the vote, I wanted to ask, uh, clearly you need to revisit the ordinance again, uh, and make some changes how soon and we can actually follow up on?
Thank you. Do you not have any first readings or any unfinished business?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, President Dieter, uh, Oliver, lead me to the point earlier about the bridge and shaking streets. Thank you, Oliver.
You're welcome. I pass it on the side.
Appreciate that, man. But really quick, you know, in lightheartedness, um, in all seriousness as well, uh, Councilmember, uh, uh, Tim Scott and I went out to Beacon Heights, uh, a couple days on the past weekend and walked over and around and, uh, oriented these, you know, ones we've seen for years, uh, and I was simply complaining that something doesn't happen. Uh, I appreciate, uh, him being the residential neighborhood chairman, uh, but also as we move further along with some of our apartment contractors and housing projects that we have here, that we began to look at an overview for all of them because I think all of them suffer from the same symptoms. A lot of it has to do with poverty, you know, and the way things are being viewed. Uh, however, I think that some of the things can be rectified in similar fashion, so as much as like dumping the trash properly, meaning a company that comes and dumps the trash, not the residents, you know, and make sure that cleanup is properly being addressed in those areas. So, um, as a response to what we saw this past weekend, and I'm sure you talked with, uh, Kathy as well, I think that'll be, uh, in our best interest to be a bit more proactive in and actually call a portion to go out there and, uh, look at the property and make sure that they are writing citations rather than warnings, because this is not the first time since Councilmember White, my, and myself as well as, uh, past member, uh, uh, Tom Brown has had a series of meetings with the same, uh, ownership and we never got any resolve out of it. So at this point, I think that it's necessary that we begin to write citations and let them know that we're serious. Uh, I don't think there is a resident, um, God, green earth should live in such filth. And I mean it, uh, wholeheartedly filth. Uh, it, it wrinks of a smell when you walk on the ground, it's like it's another world. And, uh, and I'm not blaming it because all on the residents. I think that it has much to do with the management of the facility. Uh, reason why I'm even on this trip is because I was contacted by a resident or actually a couple residents that live over there and they began to speak to me about the conditions of what their apartment, their apartments are, are, are in, uh, meaning the amount of mold that are going to the wall, uh, the conditions of some of the appliances and different things that are already in the apartment that they don't necessarily bring in with them or leave with when they, uh, are gone. And so, uh, again, I, I think that needs to be addressed and, and if it's not addressed, uh, I'll probably get back on one of my rants and my soapbox issues again about it because I don't think anyone, no one should have to live in, in such filth, no one. And so, um, hopefully we'll, yes, we're taking from code and code will be able to go out and, uh, and do their job and dress it properly. Um, I've also met with the chamber and other members of the community as well about the tax abatement issues, uh, that are before, not the tax abatement that we just passed, but the ordinance that needs to be revisited and we're going to revisit. So, uh, in between now and, uh, after June fifteenth, that's when we get the report from, uh, CED nine eight, we will begin, uh, a series of hearings before and after throughout the community to, to talk about how great these things are, but also look at other communities that are similar to us. One that we brought up is Indianapolis, they're not similar in, in respect what they are apart of Indiana. The other community I think was, uh, it was Pittsburgh, uh, uh, Pennsylvania, given the fact that they have the same rusted history that South Bend has and also transforming their economy to a high tech field and also using some of the colleges that are in their locality to produce some outcomes. And so, as we begin, uh, this process of, uh, changing or, uh, or enhancing our tax abatement, I look to the, uh, council as well as to members of the, uh, the committee, the CED committee for any, any ideas, thoughts on what we could do to make sure that this, uh, tax abatement, uh, uh, for just to address and dress in fashion that we all are happy with. And so, that is my personal deal. President Dieter?
I'll just respond to that end of the question. So in regards to Beacon Heights, we're worried about the ownership not picking up the trash correctly?
Uh, you know, it is not them not picking the trash, it's the thing that it's not being taken care of properly, uh, it just go out there. I mean, just, you don't have to walk around, you just, just sniff the air, it just doesn't, it's, it's filth, it's filth.
So would you like to get, have another meeting, I guess, uh, under Councilmember Scott? Would you do that, set that up?
Yeah, we, we...
Ownership, yeah. I'd like to comment on that. Um, thank you. I will refer to that.
Okay, I, I, I'll, let's go with them, take them on that, if you don't mind, I'll come back.
We'll watch it.
I'm, I'm at peace. Yeah, I've been there.
Thank you, VP.
You're welcome.
Along that lines, um, Henry and I did walk Beacon Heights and, um, there is accountability that needs to happen. We have started on it with, with Courtyard and, and looking at some of the other landlords, property management issues, uh, through the residential neighborhoods committee. Uh, it definitely is an interest of that committee, uh, to make changes. Um, you know, and there is correlation to our violence, there's a correlation to our youth violence and, and the crime that's going on when we have landlords, property management collecting the money and not caring what unlawful and unruly behavior happens, uh, in our neighborhoods. And, um, you know, they, I've said it time and time again, everybody needs to be a good neighbor and, uh, it starts with that leadership where, um, the landlords and the property managers and owners, uh, step up to help, um, police and basically citizen police and involvement in, um, cutting down crime and the, the bad behavior, raising the quality in the bar. Um, just, we, we had a joint committee meeting on Courtyard, uh, between Dr. Fred's Health and, uh, Safety Committee and Residential. There are improvements, um, there are areas of limitations that are being made by the owners, which, um, I think the city and I are pretty proud that the owners have stepped up and taken the responsibility. There is going to be better, uh, there's up duty officers working there more hours and longer, so, and we're actually going to be collecting the data on calls for services and to track that there are improvements being made. I was there Saturday after Beacon Heights. It is, it is clean, they fixed the lights. Um, I was pretty impressed how well Courtyard looks, but time will tell. I'm a good old boy from Missouri and you got to show me. So, uh, but it's something that I think we can do here is raise that bar, uh, is say to the landlords and the property management that the bar needs to be raised in South Bend. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, President Dieter, I'm just like, in our next, um, meeting, if we can have an update, um, in our committee meeting on the grass, the yards and see where they are with, um, keeping up with all of our yards. We've had a rainy season and the grass is coming up and I wanted to see, uh, from code, um, regarding that, just to check in, was that part of it? Also, when it comes to transport, um, in one of our previous meetings, we had a couple, a few weeks ago, we had a representative for one of our apartments, uh, prairie apartments to come in to talk with us regarding the transfer route. And they just wanted to update that they did come and, uh, the transfer route has been adjusted to meet the needs of the, um, um, prairie, um, apartments route. So they did work out a situation that is much more beneficial to all of the residents who live out there and they've adjusted the routes a little bit closer to that area. So as we said, I always can complain about some things, it's nice to know that those were hurt and that, that has been taken care of. And on Thursday, I have a meeting, we're going to try to have, um, the new shelters in the next few weeks over at the South Walmart for, um, the council out there. That's the next project we want to get off my head before the summer. So you should hear a report from that side completely because we go shopping out there.
So would you like to have that update under, uh, reported city offices with Catherine Taple?
That's fine, yes. That'd be great.
Thank you, Graham.
And, um, that one, and, um...
Yeah, Parson, well...
Okay, Parson.
Par, yeah, you mean Parson, well...
Par?
I just cut the grass.
I think it's him, Myers. Yeah. Well, who's, who's Parson, you got it?
Oh, yeah.
She grass. We can update him. I will take care of that.
Let's proceed to privilege of the floor before we open up the privilege of the floor at the end of this meeting. If you would like a council member to talk to you, you'll have to come down. We ask that you do not come up on these steps at the end of the meeting. So, Brett, listen before, you go up to that microphone, we need your name and address to talk for three minutes on anything, other than anything that was on the agenda tonight. If there's something specific that you would like the council to get back to you, or I believe there are forums up there, so just sign in what you want the council to hook into and I will assign that to a committee member and we will get back to you. If you just want to come up there and then you have three minutes to do something. Tim Scott will be signing you.
Jesse Davis, thirteen thirty-three East Calvert, South Bend. Um, I've been following a story about, uh, the, uh, the motion of the police chief and the firing of our communications director. And I know for, uh, several weeks, the man had said he couldn't speak about this, uh, due to a federal investigation, things of that nature. So there hasn't been a whole lot out in the news. Well, apparently, after reading an article yesterday, um, I was a little bit alarmed all of a sudden the mayor's speaking about this. Um, he supposedly has saved these people from criminal charges and prison time and so forth, so, um, I'm still a little puzzled about it. I, I, I don't agree with the things that are being said. And most of the council members and the mayor himself during campaigning and so forth, keep touting transparency, uh, not only from the mayor's office to the council, but also to us citizens. Um, I'm a citizen, a taxpayer and a business owner and I think we all have a right to know exactly what happened in this scenario. We don't need to hear any tapes necessarily. Uh, if that's possible, fine. If not, no big deal, but we need the truth, we need the facts, we need to know if in fact there were people that were being racial who are police officers, why were they not reprimanded? You know, what happened to the people who were involved? And I implore the entire council and, and demand as a citizen that you launch an investigation into this. Obviously, the federal investigation is now over, that's been said many times. We still aren't getting the transparency and the truth. So I think it's your job to the people of South Bend to investigate this and find out what the truth is and exactly why these demotions and firings took place.
Came around two 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 East Tobias, South Bend. I represent a group of people called Concerned Citizens. And I'm offering you to talk to the topic of, uh, the motion of police chief and the firing of a communications... chief and the firing of a communication person. Everybody got an idea, every person is a lawyer now, and I don't read it all, I don't read it all, from the guy who works in wiretap and actually works in another game. We're stuck, I got all of it stuck on my desk, but the bottom line is, the gentleman just said that we don't want to hear the tapes. Yes, we don't. And the assumption of those tapes is very, very wrong. And when you took a oath, you took a oath, one hand on a Bible, and you raised the other hand, that you were covering all the people, well, the people down there want to know, that we are police officers, that's doing something that shouldn't be doing, if we've got city officials doing something that shouldn't be doing, we, the people, want to know. Because when I get pulled over, on the streets of the city of South Bend, who am I? Am I Sam Brown, a citizen? Why am I, why am I, why am I? I would hope I'm Sam Brown, a citizen. Now, this is very important, because I trust that guy, when he pulled me over, he's going to give my citation, you're going to arrest me, but I'm hoping I will go home to my family safe. But this other guy, that's on the tape, what if he pulled me over one night? What would he do? So, we got to clean this up, so we got to bring it forth. I command the man to the city of South Bend, because he's running around, he's contacting people that can't help him.
One minute, sir.
Thank you, sir. He's contacting people that wouldn't care to help him, and he's saying, look, I've done this, I've done that, I've done this, and I've done that, but it's always the best shit you ever see. I don't agree with that. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good evening. My name is Ron Daniel, and I reside at twenty-four oh-four Frederick Street in South Bend. My concern is, for the past couple of years, I have listened as people speak, and I've heard the mayor tonight, that his concern is that we, the citizen, and police department learn to trust and communicate with each other. While I have done all of this here, and I will continue to do so, I've learned about the neighborhood watch and crime programs, I've gotten involved. My problem is, when there is a situation, and this has happened numerous of times, I follow procedures by calling the South Bend Police Department. I have talked to numerous machines, I have been told to leave a message, we'll take your name and your address. I've also been told to, well, don't worry, you don't know we're there, but we're there, they're watching, some things will be done. Again, this has been going on for a couple of years. I'm concerned about the children, not only in my neighborhood, but other neighborhoods. We talked about the police patrol, on bikes, on feet, we want to see them out on the streets, we want to be able to speak to them, learn their names, so they can know our names, learn their faces, none of this has happened. I would like to know, when will this happen, if it, at all, will it happen? And again, you know, when I call for a policeman, how long do I have to wait? And what is it you're waiting to sit back and look for, you know, what are you looking for? You see it, you see the things that I and other people are complaining about. I don't understand your procedures, and I do want to know. I'm raising a grandchild, and I am so scared, I am so scared of what will happen, what's going to happen. You know, if I call the police, you're not going, please, I don't mean disrespect, you're not, you're not there.
One minute, ma'am.
So, will somebody give me an answer to some of these questions that I've been asking for two years? Thank you.
Thank you, President Deeter. I'll take care of that.
My name is Carla Corr, my address is fourteen oh-two Lawndale, Niles, Michigan. I'm a certified arborist, which means I own and operate a tree service, and my credentials don't mean anything until it matters.
You won't just speak in the mic, then?
Yes, sir. I'm here for two parts, but first, I'd like to apologize, my issue seems so entirely petty compared to all the big issues that you folks have, and I truly am sorry. On May first, we were removing a tree in the historical district of South Bend, we've been licensed to work in the city for nineteen years, we run probably the most premier tree service here. I totally care about everything about my company, and the integrity with which it's ran. Chief Inspector Brian Haygood from Code Enforcement visited our site, and was acting in a very unprofessional and un-businesslike manner. It was very aggressive and uncalled for. I can't even explain why it happened. My crew of five were giving Mr. Haygood all the answers that he required. His attitude continued to get worse and worse as the meeting went on. He said that we were not licensed, however we were, and ticketed us for fifty dollars for not having a small arborist plate on every single vehicle at the site. That is the true reason that I'm here. The ordinance for arborists is four dash nineteen, and if you go up to the business licensing office with Michelle Adams, and you request that application and that ordinance, nowhere on there does it say that you have to have a plate affixed to every single vehicle prominently, if you are going to operate in the city limits. I've been licensed for nineteen years, and I didn't know it, and I certainly want to follow the laws. I've contested the on-ticket, but I would like to see a change in the ordinance for current and future arborists, so that we have the laws in front of us, simply put, so that we can see and follow the law. I have information from Mr. Vorty, that has the ordinances here, and so that you can see where the errors are, and the letter of complaint for Mr. Haygood's behavior. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the council?
President Deeter, before he calls.
This is, we're going to close. Anyone else like to speak to the council this time? Thank you. Dean Dunn, we are done.
President Deeter, I mean, I mean, this is a scary situation. I mean, Mr. Neal came here, not in a bad way, she was a part of the community's, uh, community.